Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. If everyone would like to stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. When they should under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Review of the minutes, August the nineteenth. Did everyone get a chance to look at those?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Is there a second?
No second thing.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Kobe, just a note. You might remember to put the pledge on there. Not that Debbie will forget it, but we go by the agenda.
To go ahead and put it on, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, aye.
We, I thought it used to be.
It was, but. Chip, I've got you down under new business?
Uh, great.
If that's o- if that's okay?
Thanks and thanks for accommodating, uh, for an appointment I had this afternoon and couldn't get out of the wall. Uh, Indiana Landmarks has approached me about the acquisition of two historic homes in, well, I guess what we call the Historic District of Hanover. Uh, one is on File Street, right next to the Community Garden, and, uh, and I can bring up a map of the houses, uh, real quick. Why don't I try that? And at least you can see the, you can see the screen, and I can show you a map if it will let me share. Uh, hold on a second. Here we go. Let me know when you can see it.
Yep.
If we can.
Okay, great. So it's Madison and Main, the Historic District, and right now, we've got the Milliken House. If you can see my cursor, the Milliken House, the old mill, uh, the, the house at the back entrance to the college, the Clemens Hill House. Then you've got the Orolanas and the Tylers who have done work through Indiana Landmarks. Uh, so we've got good activity right through there, kind of in a row. The two new ones that Indiana Landmarks would like to pick up are on the outside of the area, which is, or further extending the area, which is great. One is up here on File Street, next to the Community Garden. I call that Dr. Smucker's house because he lived there for a number of years. Um, and it is an eighteen ninety-ish Victorian cottage, under all that aluminum siding. Uh, it was a house that the college owns. It was probably gonna tear down, but Landmarks said, look, this is an older house, uh, worthy of being saved. So that's one where the star is, and then the other one down here, where the star is, is on East Main Street, right across Presbyterian Avenue, from the, uh, old firehouse. And it's the house that sits perpendicular to the street, so as you're approaching it, you, uh, uh, this is what you see as you approach it. It's the house that has, I think it's called barge or the decorative gingerbread stuff up there, and then just beyond it is the old firehouse. Um, and the couple that owns that, so the college owns Dr. Smucker's house and wants it donated to Landmarks. Uh, this house is owned by a couple who we met through the Historic District Meeting that we had a couple of months ago. They came and talked. They kept Greg's coolest information. They called him and said, hey, we'd like to talk to you about selling the house because they, they've been good stewards of it, but they don't live in the, in the, in the area, and it's just more than I think they wanna take on. So they've been, so Greg's put it under contract, subject to a handful of things happening like this meeting. Um, and he's put it under contract for seventy thousand dollars. And what Landmarks would like us to, uh, approve and support is, um, a Jefferson Together grant for this house for eighty thousand dollars, which is the seventy to buy it, and about ten thousand to get some work started. Uh, with a budget to come, and I would require Indiana Landmarks to have a budget to us no later than the end of, uh, October. So we've given them almost two months to get a budget to us, and the budget would be for the exterior. It'd be like what happened on the house at the back of the college entrance, the Clemens Hill House. Uh, they're gonna do the exterior renovation, which would include some landscaping. They'll go inside and demo what needs to be demoed, clean up the inside, get some plans together with an architect, and then sell it to somebody who wants to finish the inside of the house, rather than doing both the inside and the outside. Right now, the Milliken House, they're doing both the inside and the outside. It's just taking a while. I think it's expensive. Um, so, and over at the, um, Smucker House on File Street, uh, it'd be a similar situation, except there's no acquisition cost. We're gonna donate the house to Landmarks. Uh, so they would ask for ten thousand dollars now to cover the closing costs and doing some initial work. And then by the end of October, same deal, they would give us a budget for what they think this house would take to renovate exterior with some on the interior, but not a full interior renovation, just enough to clean it up for somebody.
So if they, if they get the Smucker House, how does that affect the Community Garden? Cause I thought they were going to expand that way.
Well, we, we did talk about that. Uh, for the gathering place for the Community Garden, you, I, I think an ideal place for that would be where the Smucker House is. The problem is, the Smucker House is there, and it's, it's actually worth saving. I've been in it a couple of times now. I mean, it's, it's in rough shape, but it's no rougher. It's absolutely no rougher than the Milliken House, and certainly not nearly as rough as the mill or some of these other houses. Um, you know, we probably would go on the other side of the Community Garden for a gathering space, or would we put the gatherings place, place someplace else in town? Um, there are other places that might be good in town. Um, I love the firehouse. I mean, I just think the firehouse is, is an interesting, but the Oxford family owns that. I don't know if they'd be interested in selling it or not, but what a great place. It's already built that people could gather at. So I, I think what's interesting about these houses is they stretch out the existing area a little bit, and the way most development works is, you know, you, you renovate a few houses, and then people do the spaces in between. They do the infill spaces. So all we've done here with these two would be to stretch it out just a bit. So the, the request is, uh, ten thousand dollars until they figure out what the budget looks like for Dr. Smucker's, and then eighty thousand dollars until they figure out what the budget looks like for the house on Main Street. And the college supports this. We've looked at it. I don't think there's any issue here. You know, two houses for that kind of money on, on the front end of the project would look pretty good, actually.
Do we put a timeline on that? Uh, I'll say we've had complaints about one of the homes.
Yep. You, you are. In fact, I'm putting up here as a letter, uh, that Hanover has drafted, well, that Landmarks has drafted, and right here, highlight, yell, all renovations must be completed no later than October first, twenty twenty-seven.
Okay.
It, it might be a little, but that's a great question, Treeba, and you're exactly right. We can. We need things to move smartly along.
Right.
You're exactly right. Uh, I think October first, twenty-seven is perfect for the exterior. It'll get done before then. It might be a little aggressive for, you know, somebody who moves in and does the interior renovations themselves, but I think what we have to do is put controls so that they don't have jugs, uh, construction supplies sitting out in front of you.
Right, and that's what we've had the complaints about, because the one's been a couple of years.
Yep, uh, I understand, and so, and we would also, on the Smucker House, we'd probably reduce the lot size by about half because we want the other half of the yard. It's a deep yard.
Right.
We want that to go toward the Community Garden or the residential development.
Right.
Um, and then the college would like a first write-up refusal in case we have a prof or somebody move into town and we says, hey, they need a house.
Sure.
We'd ask for that, and that's what we did on the Milliken House too, so pretty much the same thing as we did before, uh, a little less on the, on the inside.
So they could, they could still come-
Would be my recommendation to the council, would, or my request to the council would be to support this and, and then we'll get the documents together with Landmarks. They have some approvals they have to go through on their side too.
But are they gonna come back and ask for more money? Is that what I'm understanding?
Absolutely, so, exactly. So what they'll do by the end of October, they're gonna, on both houses, each house, they're gonna get their budgets together. They're gonna get with their contractors. Um, it, it looks a little counterintuitive. And do you, do you buy a house before you know what it costs? Well, not ordinarily. You know, you, you know what you wanna do first, but, uh, with, with the Smucker House being donated, that reduces the cost tremendously. And the other house, I'll tell you about the house across the street from the old fire station. It, um, it sits on half an acre. And I, I would hate for somebody, I would hate for that house to go on the market and somebody buy it and do something different with it. Uh, it's, it's one of the oldest houses in town. It's about eighteen fifty, believe it or not. So it's a, and, and I think what it'll do for the street as you're coming in from the Gen D side, down Main Street, and you look on your right, uh, we'll open it up a little bit, maybe lift up some of the trees and the landscape in there. They'll really show off.
Can you remind me again how much money, uh, is set aside for this?
Yes, and I'm glad you asked that, and I should have it, I should have it answered, never the dollar, and I don't, but I'm gonna do some quick math. It's three point three million in total. Um, and I think we had six hundred thousand dollars out the door, um, at that point, so what does that leave you with? Two, seven? Um, and then we still had, I don't know, maybe another hundred thousand to go on the Milliken House, so there's about, there's over two and a half million left, let me put it that way.
So is it my understanding that when Indiana Landmarks sells that, the money comes back?
Yes, uh, and, and that is also in the letter, which I didn't give you enough time to look at, but, uh, for instance, this is Dr. Smucker's house. While the intent of the rehab is to resell the house to a single family, we may incorporate it into the adjacent Community Garden or another Jefferson Together project, but ultimately, the, the intent on both houses is to sell them, and the money from both of those comes back into the district, the Historic District.
So that would replenish?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially with the one being donated.
I don't know what Dr. Smucker's house is gonna cost, but let's just throw around a big number. Let's say it's a hundred thousand dollars. Um, you know, that house should sell for quite a bit more than that.
Debbie never been in it.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh yeah, she knows.
So have all the raccoons.
I think some of their children may still live there. I'm not quite sure.
Oh, yeah.
Quick question.
Wouldn't it be nice to have that house just, I think it, I think it will look really good next to the Community Garden. It, it should be a cute little house.
Jane, Jane has a question.
Yeah, uh, if, if there was an occasion in which one of these houses didn't sell, um, then the grant would just kind of eat that cost? Like, there would be no way if it sold in ten years, rather than within the four years of the grant span? Would it ever come back to the grant or the town and the college?
Well, um, I think, Jane, we'd wanna do something before July twenty-nine, when the grant is up. So let's say the market tags, you, you do the renovations and the market tags. I think everything sells at a certain price. That's been my experience in real estate over many years. But let's say it's just not at a price that we would all agree is fair, and so we just decide to hold it. I think we'd need to put it into, uh, an entity of some kind to, to hold it and then maybe operate it as an Airbnb or maybe a long-term rental until the market comes back. But I, I think you wanna get it out of the grant before.
You could always, you could always rent it to a faculty member.
You, you could, or when it goes on the market, you might have to stand in line with my wife.
Yeah.
Because she, she, she has admired that little house for a while.
Oh, really?
Even though directly it's lived there.
I've never known anybody to admire that house.
Jane Smucker.
Uh.
Yeah, Jane Smucker.
He would be thrilled to death right now.
Yeah, he would.
Well, I know Dr. Smucker liked it. It's, I'll tell you, when you get inside, you see, and Debbie's seen it, the, the ninth ceiling's in that house?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It, it has potentially be a cool house. It's not big. It's not fancy. It never was meant to be.
No, got a little cellar in there.
Well, the hill house, the hill house wasn't fancy, but it's unique. It's got a trap, trap door in the living room that goes down into the cellar. It's cool.
Oh, I didn't know that.
You open it up and.
Where's that at?
Emma Hill's house, right as you go onto campus, that Indiana Landmark bought, so, yeah. It's an neat little house inside.
I think that's the same thing.
Doesn't Smuckers have a trap door?
Eh, don't.
Well, there was a room I didn't go back into.
I know he has a cellar, cause I, I was in the cellar, but I don't remember how I got down there. That's how, that's how the raccoons got in.
I just remembered getting called for the raccoons in the attic.
What just happened, Jane?
I know, it's, well, it's, it's amazing.
I think that's him.
There are a number of houses that the college own, has owned, that they talked about tearing down, and I would just hate to have seen some of these houses go down. Um, you know, the Bedford Stones on Cindiana, that's a different thing. It's nineteen sixty.
Right.
Yeah, but, you know, an eighteen ninety cottage, it's like, ah, I mean, unless it's just a real, unless it costs two hundred and fifty thousand to update, which isn't worth it, I think you try to save it, and, and, you know, I guess we could get to the point where Landmarks says, here's how much, and we all look at each other and say, oh my gosh, that's ridiculous. Let's not do that.
Well, and as you said, you're donating the house, the colleges, yeah.
That was a no-brainer.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Cause he donated it to the college.
Yeah.
I think it, I think it makes good sense to the town, and I think everybody will be pleased with the end result.
Well, I've always wished somebody would fix up the house there on Main Street. I mean, I went by so many times. It is a cute house, and I've always hoped that, you know, somebody will buy it, and I'm thinking, okay, what are they gonna do? And then nothing ever happens, so.
Well, and it's so funny that the couple who owns it came to the meeting we had right there in that room a couple of months ago, and at the end of the meeting, people were introducing themselves, and they told us the property that they owned. And Greg looked at me and I looked back at Greg, and I thought, oh my goodness, I hope someday, if, if they ever decide to sell it, they'll call us first. And they did. They called Greg.
Right.
First, first choice.
I would too.
Before.
All right, well, I've, I've got you down on new business, so we'll discuss it more when we get down there. Give everybody time to think. And then maybe they'll have questions for you back then.
Yep, no, I'll hang. I'll hang as long as you all are there.
Okay.
You can stay up here.
All right, audience call. Does anybody hear that? Needs to be heard. Okay. Kyle, you're it.
I was not prepared to hear that.
Yeah, you don't have all your hardware on.
Well, I know. I presented my kids' talking, and I forgot to print off stats for the week, for tonight's meeting, so. Um, we had, I'm just going off memory from yesterday, cause that's when I made them. We had like thirteen arrests last month. We had over three hundred calls for service, over a hundred fifty traffic stops. Uh, we stayed busy last month. It was really nice.
Yeah.
So, things seems to be going good. School's back in swing. Traffic is great.
How, how is school traffic going? I came over, well, we were here today and saw.
There was, I watched twenty cars pull out today.
And I've been going over and sharing drugs, and I've seen cars.
Yeah, that, the parking problems, I think, have gotten better.
Good.
You know, just the backup on main cross. I mean, there's just a lot of traffic at one side, so.
Yeah.
But I don't think it's, you know, it's not terrible.
Yeah, you think it's better?
I, I think this, you know, the school is making adjustments as well, so.
Right, well, I wanna think Southwestern School because we met with them.
Yeah.
Uh, they-
And a lot of people are using the park parking lot.
It's gonna say, it seemed like it works out really well, so.
Right, right. They have a golf cart that leads them out.
Yeah.
Of course, good.
Yeah, there was over twenty cars here today, so.
But main cross, main cross is backed up.
Some, yeah, at the links, yeah. I mean, it's not for an extended period of time, but just, you know, getting the buses out and then getting the elementary school, you know, the bus rider, the parent pickup.
Right. Right. And didn't they, somebody said they started three lines.
Yep, they've got that marked in the parking lot.
So that helped?
Yep.
Good. Good.
Any questions?
Yeah, BB ordinance. Do you know anything about the BB ordinance?
No.
Okay, so, you know, we had the deal with the cat that got shot over.
Yes.
Okay, and so we talked about, um, coming up with a plan, and one of the things that I think, I, I don't know if it was Shane found it or somebody found it, um, there was an ordinance, but then Ben had some questions, and I, I, I think I would like for you guys to look at this ordinance again. And I don't want it to go away, because I was kinda told that, you know, well, we'll just, no, just let it go away. Well, I, you know, we told these people that.
We, we tried to do something.
Cat, you know, I mean, if we've got somebody killing animals, we gotta have something to back it.
Right.
Um, so if you-
And maybe talk to our attorney.
Yeah.
And if you need us to set that up, I will.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I don't want it to go away, um, and Kobe has a, a copy of it, so.
Yeah.
If you can just get with Kobe, you guys, and just brainstorm, brainstorm, and I know in here it talks about
So he's been, he's been writing it up.
Not putting it in the tr- are you, something about a trunk and different things, and Ben just kind of thought, and I, I don't mean to speak for him, but he's not here, and, um, but he had some concerns because he wanted to make sure that the gun law and this, I mean, that the gun law didn't overpower this or-
We didn't, we didn't step on other people's, on people's rails.
Right, yeah, 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 and that's what he was worried about, so if you guys-
Sure, yeah, that would be my main concern.
But we'll, we'll keep it on the agenda.
Yeah, we're just gonna keep it on the agenda, and if you can keep looking at that, and if you guys can keep looking at, um, what we're gonna do to slow down in the neighborhoods, we talked about the signs and stuff, and, um, and I know Zachariah is working on that, so if you could get with him and just see where we're at, um, I mean, cause I don't want that to go away either.
No, I, I like the sign idea.
Yeah.
So.
But we couldn't get any feedback whether it was working or not. I know it works for me when you guys put it on volts, cause I hit my break. It's like twenty miles an hour, I mean.
Yeah, it works for me too.
Yeah, it's like, oh, and, and it brings it to my attention. It's like, oh, back on it, I'm going, I'm doing twenty-four. Where's that?
You see all these lights?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I went in the vernon the other night, and it, it tells you your speed.
It does, yes, and you're being, you're instantly like, yeah.
But these signs we were going to get don't tell you your speed.
Right, they just flash around.
They just flash, and so we need to look, how much more would that cost?
Would it be to know what your speed is?
That'd be more effective.
I think it would be too.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I would rather spend a little bit more money, and it'd be more effective than to put something up that people are just gonna, you know.
Me too.
Right.
In fact, Chip, I'm not speaking for you, but you said that might be safety with the lily?
Oh, you're on mute.
Oh. It's okay. We can't hear you.
You didn't hear anything.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
It's not, it's not often that you get me muted for a comment. No, but you get the laugh. Uh, yeah, I think so, Treeba, I think we need to think about that more. If the town was planning on spending, let's pick a number, I think it was, what was it, eight hundred dollars a sign?
Yeah, yeah.
And you find out that to have the sign that flashes your speed, which I think infers you're being watched, and it infers you could be ticketed, although you can't. And if, if it's another, I don't know, seven hundred dollars or whatever the number is, you get the sign.
You'd make a difference.
Why don't we take that out of the grant? It gives you really what you want. If that's what you want.
Sure, okay.
Well, I think it's more effective to show your speed.
Yeah, yeah, I do too.
I'm, no, I disagree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, if you can work on that, you guys.
Yes, ma'am.
I think, I think that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nothing too delicate. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
Sorry, my mom goes.
No, you're fine, you're fine.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
You were talking about the school diggers.
Yes.
So I live on the back end of Jackson, and there's no speed limit sign back in that part, and there's no parking sign in that part of Jackson. And we have just a couple, it's gonna crack itself, but we have a couple mothers that circle the neighborhood. They don't go to the park, the park that keeps circling.
Yeah.
But when that starts, they come down that hill, thirty, thirty-five mile an hour at the top of Jackson, and, um, Alice, my next door neighbor, she come, and she said, I couldn't get in and out of my driveway as fast as they're going, and they're gonna hurt somebody.
Okay, so speed-
Is that more in the afternoon or in the morning?
Like mornings are not in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Just in the afternoons, but they come, they take the top of Jackson, and they're down that hill.
Yeah.
And they're, yeah, and then there's cars down there, and then they start circling.
Scott, can you put a speed limit sign there at the end of Jackson?
End of Jackson.
As they come around the corner to come down at the top end, there's no-
So.
On the backside.
On the backside?
Yeah, side of Jackson.
Cause as they, cause as the car batteries come around that corner.
Is that off, like off Meadow, and they come around?
They come down that hill and, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Some of the cars come on the golf cart. I don't know, they're supposed to be leading, they just, that four cars will be that golf cart around there. And then down that hill, we've got that golf cart.
There's always some.
Yeah, and it's up there.
There's always some.
There is.
It's not bad because they're keep moving, but they're just going so fast.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Defeats their purpose.
Yeah, we'll get a, we'll get a speed limit sign put up.
Okay, cause I've noticed that there's been comments down here about the speed bumps.
Yeah.
And the people on the street are talking about, maybe we should put some speed bumps in, in Jackson.
Well, and-
Put that down the, uh, or-
With the, with those signs we're talking about, we're gonna look at all the streets.
Yeah.
It's not just, we might not be able to do them all at once.
Yeah, especially the main roads.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
And then a couple of them will zip around, cause there are people behind me. She's a, she's a teacher they got in, go all the way around Samantha's, see if they can beat someone and come back to do it and get in line.
Is there an army coming out?
Yeah, yeah. So, that's just how fast they're speeding.
All right, yeah, okay. We'll take care of it.
Yep, and we'll be out. I'll put it out, we'll just go out for it, but, no problem.
Okay, thanks. Scott?
Well, we, it's been a year since we painted the water tower, so, uh, I have to take it down so they can inspect it.
Okay.
So I'll have to get with Hanover College and Kent.
To use their water.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, it's just the, the way that fills up.
How long does that have to be down for?
Long enough for them to climb in it and then make sure it's good. Midwest Engineering's will be doing the inspection. So that's coming up soon as I.
Yeah, yeah.
Get with everybody, probably the next month or so, before winter comes.
Okay, I'll just, if we can get some date, kind of like a timeframe, then we can put it out.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to. Yeah, let you guys know, but that, I just got the email Friday and haven't really talked to anybody yet.
Okay.
But we got three of the lights put up out here and concreted where it was all gravel.
They look good.
And I'd like to, we got the other three ready. I'd just like to do something a little different out there, but I don't wanna do it without everybody's approval. Like, where these little gravel areas stick out, we, Ezra actually came up with the idea of concreting them and put a couple benches in that area or something.
Well, we wanted to concrete it anyway, cause we wanna get rid of all the gravel for somebody breaks their ankle like me.
All the gravel, yeah.
It would be, and I'm gonna check, would maybe move the flagpole to this side? Cause this one is, it's from the seventies, it's fiberglass, and actually, the light that we wanna put up needs to go about where the flag is over here now.
Right.
But I can, I just, I wanted to make sure everybody was all right with that before I went ahead.
Can you give us a, a cost of what it's gonna cost?
The flagpole?
Are you wanting to do it before the next meeting, or are you gonna be going that quick?
Yeah, we'll probably, as far as the concrete and stuff, we already got the poles, we'll, C dam's just come over here, and that, that price will be a little cheaper than the original, because we done all the work to, to get it prepared.
Right.
So they're just, uh, charging us time and material.
Yeah.
So.
Well, when I talked to Matt, the jets, the jet outs are gonna stay.
Yeah.
We're not taking those out, because he said that's a safety issue with, with the circle.
And that's what he thought about concreting them.
Yes, yes, so, yeah, I mean.
And putting a couple benches and-
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
I'd like to say that, the one hangout, probably, I don't know how much a flagpole costs, but I, I think they're three or four thousand dollars for a non-
They probably are.
That's only, I haven't got a price on that. The rest of it, we'll prepare it and get it ready, and they'll just come in and pour the concrete.
Do we have, do we have any money, any, where we could take that from?
That could be all put in the subgrant agreement, couldn't it, Chip?
You know, it always comes back to that.
I mean, with all, with the concrete and the lights and the paving, I mean.
I mean, what, I, I, I haven't talked to Matt about those jut outs. I mean, I look at those and think, shouldn't they have something green in them? I'm, I'm not a big concrete fan, but I'm not the one who uses the park, uh, or has to maintain it. Uh, but I would be curious to say, okay, so you're gonna keep the jut outs, Matt, what do you wanna do with them? What do you want them to look like? I mean, can we, can we wait for Matt and his group to, I don't know what their parking work is gonna look like?
Yeah, if you, if, has he got any id- if you can find out if he's got any idea, cause-
We're gonna, well, we're gonna meet with him Tuesday at two.
Right.
Here at the-
Is he gonna come here?
Yeah, he's gonna come here.
Okay, I'll just, I'll wait and see.
So we're gonna meet with him Tuesday at two. I'm, I'm scheduling a meeting, and I was gonna see, Jane, I don't know if you're available for next Tuesday at two, and Tim, if you're available next Tuesday at two. Uh, he's gonna come up. We talked about it this afternoon, and, um, we're gonna, Kobe's gonna schedule a meeting to, he's gonna come and talk about where we walked around and all the different things, so.
I'll just wait. It's gonna be that quick, it's.
And my request, we get a new flagpole, let's get a new flag.
Yeah.
That one's shredded.
That one needs to come down.
And it should come down now.
Yeah.
It's an embarrassment, and that's not your responsibility, I don't think. But we also need to fix town hall where you can lower that flag at half staff. The governor ordered it. We're the only ones in town that didn't. But we also need to fix town hall where you can lower that flag at half staff, the governor ordered it, we're the only ones in town that didn't.
Okay.
Because chances are it's hard to do it.
I'll have to look at that, cause I've lowered it. I, I've, I've said it half twice since I've been here.
It needs to be asked, the, the post office, the college, the firehouse.
Half, half is right around where the gutter is.
Yeah.
Well, and that's the bad, we need to get it off of the building.
Yeah.
The pole needs to come off of the building and we need to put a pole, and I figured that's gonna be the landscaping and stuff for
Yeah, for the.
Main street, um, but I would like to get the flagpole off of the building, because when you do put it at half staff, it's.
Away, cause once you lower it to half staff, it does stay right on the top of the building and the gutter, yeah.
It stays right there up against the building, yeah.
Does it have a light on it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause you don't have a light on, you're supposed to lower them every night.
Yeah.
That's right.
But I would like to get a new, new flag for.
But I hate to ignore, I mean, I was asked by the post office why the town didn't do it.
Didn't?
And I said, well, I don't know, I'll check and.
Yeah.
The college did.
Yeah.
Cause the governor ordered it. The park didn't do it.
Okay, so let's, we'll talk to Matt on Tuesday.
Okay.
And you say Kobe's gonna send out an invite for that?
Yes.
It's, it's gonna be in person.
We'll, we'll post it.
You'll post it.
It's gonna be in person here Tuesday.
Two, so, okay, so I'm not, I need to put it on my calendar myself, I wanna come to that.
Great.
Um, well, Tuesday, when?
At two.
Tuesday at two. Got it.
That's the ninth, you got that, Bob? They'll probably send you a notice when they post it.
I've got.
I think they do.
Yep, got Paul State coming in that day, but we'll, that afternoon, but we'll, we'll figure something out here.
Okay. Do you know how long that meeting will be? He usually likes to set it for about an hour. Okay, I might have to leave early and bring my dog, but. Oh, absolutely. Absolutely, love her. Okay, what else?
Uh, we, the dirt that we dug out by the tennis court, we was able to take it back to field two, start filling in some low spots that we looked over that day.
Yeah, cause I would like to send pictures once that gets done.
Yeah.
And we get it seeded and everything, I'd like to send her pictures to let her know that we are.
I might go ahead, since we're not, I'm gonna hold off on the lights till next week, I'll just start on the, taking dirt over there and getting that, I mean, we, they took dirt over there quite a bit.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm sure they'll need more.
Yeah, D N R was, cause she wanted pictures and stuff too, so.
Okay, yeah, they filled in the low spot and everything on that corner.
Well, Thursday Kobe and I are gonna work on sending the last part out.
Yeah.
So, hopefully get reimbursed.
But other than that, everything's been running fine. Uh, if you guys got any questions or complaints or.
Can we go on down to new business for a minute?
Yep, yep.
So anyway, you know, with like two months and there are, are money for.
Stormwater.
Stormwater rate, you know.
Yeah.
Um, I was gonna talk to you the other day, but I thought, you know, we probably need to start thinking about what we're gonna do to start improving some of that stuff so people can see that we are doing something with some money to.
So, can you make us a list of projects that you think, like what needs to be done right away, um, or if Tim knows some complaints that we've had?
First one, I'd like to go from the storage unit. Culverts over there.
Oh, yeah, that's the, one of the biggest problems.
East. Very first one.
And what, what a price are we looking at for that?
Depends on how many, ideally you'd wanna put a concrete ditch in there, like hickory drive and stuff.
Right.
And new, probably new culverts.
Right, yeah, they.
Some of them smashed, I mean, or metal, I mean, it probably is easy to put new culverts in.
So I know we had fifty, over fifty some hundred the first month, so after this one, we should.
Yeah, we should.
We should be over probably eleven thousand, you know.
Now, have we paid Baker Tilly, or Baker Tilly and all them?
That's what I said earlier, we gotta pay them too, but, I mean, we can pay them at two installments.
Have we paid them yet?
Oh, okay, I, I forgot about it.
Yeah.
That'll probably be a, that might cost them, you know, that's. Oh, I'd, I'd say by the end of September, mid October, we can.
Why don't you?
We'd have some.
Look at what that's gonna cost. Pick three projects.
Yeah.
Let's start with three projects that you think needs to be addressed.
And I want you to look into signs.
Like behind.
For like behind Maple, all those places, people dumping stuff.
No dumping, let's put some no dumping signs.
Oh, I know.
Put a, put five hundred dollar fine.
Yeah.
I mean, it may not do any good, but it might be twice.
We'll do, we'll do an ordinance on it, if we can catch them, we'll do an ordinance.
Yeah.
Some of them.
I mean.
And we've actually started, like the areas that we can get to, we're, we're ready to, we've killed the weeds where people and brush off brush and.
Yeah. I mean, the, the people behind the house, we, um, threw out their firewood and.
Oh, I know, that's why I was telling Danny.
And it all comes back up underneath that house.
Oh, I know, and you can't, you know, everybody put fences back here, but you can't get nothing down through there.
No.
You have to physically take a wheelbarrow and shovel, shovel the whole thing.
My houseman's done it.
Is that a right of way?
I don't.
If they're, the fences have cleared, cause he checked, well, he checked ours.
There was a easement that.
I didn't know if we had a right of way through that.
Yeah, he does. But it's not a right of way to get equipment down through there.
But they got the fence on the right of way?
Yeah.
They got the fence on the right of way?
I don't know if it's a ri, I wasn't here when they started that project, since it's back there, we have no utilities back here, but Duke Energy does.
Yeah.
So there is, I'm assuming we got a easement to put that in there.
Well, when we put the fence up, Duke came, everybody came and marked it.
Yeah.
Uh, and we're right in line with the others, but I still say a sign. You're gonna be fined and then if we see him, I'm gonna call and say, hey, they threw this in there, then the police can go. Might not do any good, but signs don't cost that much.
Well, it, yeah, you could put a sign up and then the ones, there's, there's somebody lives there and sees that somebody's, cause they put all their grass and stuff in there.
I'm gonna. I'm gonna look at a dumping, a dumping ordinance, cause I don't know if we have one, um.
There's a lot of. Yeah, I don't know either.
So I'm gonna look at dumping ordinances and then we can do fines and we're going ahead and pass an ordinance and we're going ahead and put signs.
Well, I'm, over by the park, didn't you guys have to clean out a bunch of tires?
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah.
That people threw, I mean, it's not just Maple and.
Right, yeah, no, no.
All that is other places.
That's what I'm saying, we need a dumping ordinance, cause we have had people call about people dumping in different places in town, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if you got a ordinance and they get caught, you can lease it, freeze it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, but pick three projects.
Yeah.
Okay, now the one like, if I was, let's talk about con, that would be kind of expensive project.
Yeah.
Well, definitely leave that one, cause that's where the water isn't, isn't on a.
Yeah, crosses the road.
We know there's three or four culverts in there.
By hickory when you come out, like where car foots.
Yeah, right there in front of the, um.
Yeah, if we could put the, if we could get great and put the culverts in, they then come back and let it.
The.
I mean, I think people.
The entrance to that trade report, cause it covers that.
Yeah, yeah.
Put the concrete in or whatever.
Yeah, seeing that we're really moving forward and, you know, they're paying money for this and you wanna make sure.
Sure, they wanna see.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can, uh.
I was gonna, I, I thought I would see you last week.
I didn't, but somebody asked me and I said, well, we're gonna let it build up a little bit, but I didn't know how much it was built up.
Gotta let it build up.
Well, I'd.
It's about five thousand a month.
Yeah.
One day I was over there and I asked.
Yeah.
And it might be, it might be, you know, March or April before we can start the projects.
But at least we can say.
At least we can say this is going to be coming up, we're getting ready to fix this and.
It would be nice if we could get them culverts in while it was dry.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, right now'd be a good time, but.
Yeah.
But I don't know. How much do we have to pay, uh, the engineering group?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Have we paid that yet?
Nope, wait, no.
Waiting for the money to.
Waiting for the money to get built up, and we might pay them seventy-five and seventy-five.
Do they know? Does it say, do they know we're waiting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Would they do that and let us do some projects?
I'm sure they will, yeah.
Okay.
But I, I agree to him that.
Yeah.
That was one of my big things of doing this.
Yeah, yeah, let's.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah, if you want me to go ahead and pick some projects, that's no problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And we'll look into the dumping thing, cause that is dumping.
Yeah.
I thought it was.
And we'll find out about the ordinance, the way of.
Yeah, I'll look, I, I know we don't, I don't ever remember seeing a dumping ordinance that we've got, but.
I just thought it was against the law to dump anything.
Um.
Well, I mean, like, last week, we went over, me and Lawrence picked up two big bags of trash from C V S to.
Yeah, oh my gosh, that ditch is terrible.
Yeah.
And water, you know, that backs up, and as bad as it did.
We gotta keep, well, we have to stay on top of those grates because of trash and the, just.
Yeah, but we can put five hundred dollar fine for dumping on those?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, littering, blittering.
Yeah.
Yeah, littering.
All the littering signs.
It's a thousand now, someplace.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm seeing where Jendy's had put the new culvert in and.
Yeah.
And that, that water was backing up.
Oh, yeah, it was bad there from the Jeres', yeah.
Crazy.
Yeah. Yeah. Alright, does anybody else got anything for Scott?
Good job.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Kobe, you got anything?
Uh, the audit's over, uh, we had our exit conference, uh, meeting with them last week, um, everything went, uh, really well, so.
Uh, it's gonna cost.
They found us some money?
They found us some money, yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna cost the town.
Seventy-nine hundred dollars.
Out of our, and they'll take that out of our.
Uh, local taxes, um, and then.
Our property taxes, yeah.
Property taxes, and then, um, sewer was around seven thousand dollars, they'll invoice us for that. And then, um, the water utility, um, was about six thousand.
That's their charge for doing the audit?
Yeah.
A shade under twenty thousand, um, except they, they were under budget, cause we had everything in that room, so it, it was gonna be more than that.
Yeah. Right. Easier for them, yeah.
Yep, uh, their price per hour is about a hundred and twenty-nine dollars per hour, so, but yeah, like I say, they were, they were under budget, so.
Kudos to you and your staff.
So, I mean, they, uh, but everything.
So if they've done that ever two years, that would've been half, right?
Yeah, yeah, probably be about half, yeah, yeah, and I don't know if it'll go every two years.
Yeah. They, yeah, they, they are so backed up with the bigger cities and stuff that they said, you know, they will definitely try to do it every four years for us, but.
Yeah, they just.
And they're not so worried so much about little towns, but.
Yeah, yeah.
They went all the way back, they did invite Keith to come back, but he was in Italy, so, cause his part, they audited his part too and all of that was good, so
Yeah. Yeah. Right, two, two years of his.
Both clerk treasures, you know, did a good job and.
So.
Yeah, it went well.
That would be two hundred penny dollar an hour next time.
I know, I know.
Oh, wait a.
Alright, old business, update on the progress of the D N R projects at the park, I mean, I think, well, we talked a little bit about the signage, we're gonna get that. Kobe and I are gonna work Thursday and we're gonna put the last thing together to get reimbursed, I think fifty-nine thousand and something is what
Reimbursed. Yeah.
They still need to reimburse us and, um, just little minor stuff that we're fixing up, you know, trails, where it dips off a little bit, they wanted it smooth, so.
Will they reimburse us before we put the signs up?
Yeah, 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 cause, uh, they'll just stop in periodically.
Okay.
And we have to send pictures once we put them up.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take pictures and then we'll, we'll.
I didn't know what hole they had.
Yeah, we'll, we'll never know when they stop in, they said, they'll just stop in every once in a while.
Yeah. Make sure that we're still doing everything we're doing.
Make sure they're still up. So, yeah.
So hopefully we can get that finished, um, update on the employee handbook, uh, Dana and I've been working on that and I think we talked to Kobe today, like when we get one done and we know what we want, we can give it to Linda and, you know, when she gets her free time to work for the town council, then she can kinda help.
Make the proposed changes to come.
Yeah, so we, like, if we do one or two at a time and then we bring it to the council, we're not overwhelmed.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, like we are.
Well, and you understand, you understand it better.
It is overwhelming, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, there's a lot of changes I think we wanna make, so. Yeah, yeah, so, Veterans Garden, um, Alan's out of town, so we're waiting on them getting back with us on that, um, neighborhood speed bumps. We kinda like, that just destroys the road, um, once you start drilling holes and stuff, or if it's lumped up, it hurts people's cars and then they wanna come and complain it to us that we've destroyed their cars, so I think the flashing signs, so hopefully that's a better option for us in, in the area, so, waiting for the police to get back with us on that. Uh, building inspector, we're still waiting to hear back from the attorney, he said he should have that within the next couple of days.
And I'll probably call a special town council meeting to look at that, because we gotta move on it.
Yeah.
Uh, but the commissioners have to vote, yeah, there's a lot to it.
Yeah, Scott did hear from Washington DC from FEMA, uh, wanting to know where we're at on the building inspector and stuff, because, you know, we have to have them for down there too, so hopefully.
And this will take care of that.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah, I was supposed to do an assessment, I guess, on there before.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Well, uh, Josh has been on vacation and yesterday holidays, so Pat was gonna talk to him today to make sure he's okay with everything. So, but that's part of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The zoning enforcement part, I think I'd like to have a work session one day for the council to get together and, um, so we can kinda talk about what we do want in that position, you know, if we're gonna have our street department and our officers go around and maybe, you know, turn stuff in for us or, um.
Just what will work.
Yeah.
Just what will work, we gotta have our attorney.
Yeah, so we, I think we need to have a work session with them to come in and, and just so we can really figure out. So we're not redoing it over and over. Livestock in town, um, I met Dan today at, uh, town hall, he stopped in, he lives over here on Jackson, um.
And you're just a little under a year, October seventeenth, probably a year.
Yeah, so, his neighbors who live on Smith, um, have bought some chickens and rooster and moved it back to the end of their yard. Which makes it close to his backyard to where.
You know, on Jackson, the houses are set back on the hill, so they have very small backyards, my backyard from the back of my house to.
Right. Yeah.
Fit my fence about twenty feet, and their yard is probably three tons less than that, so. When they first got them, they had them close to their house, but when the roosters started crawling in the morning, they moved it back to the park anyway, so. Every morning, I may woke up at about thirty, six o'clock with the rooster calling.
Oh, yeah.
And it's just become a nuisance and, and, to me, and I've talked to him several times, that had, I originally had two roosters. Two weeks ago, they got rid of one of them, but this one is like in this morning waking me up, and I was looking at the ordinances, and there is a nuisance ordinance. About habitual barking or habitual noise, which is a di- disturbance to the neighbor, the neighborhood.
Yeah.
So that is, uh, your, what is it, S ninety point oh five nuisance. Uh, and then it's, uh, paragraph G, unnecessary foul or not, so like, it overshoots, and sometimes I've. I've been in a fish pond, I've put, uh, flower gardens out back, and I got a swing, and I got patio back there, so it's really, really hot. And, and nights evenings, I can't sit out back because of the poker room, chicken, and herb, and I talked to them about that, and they've not cleaned that up yet.
What ordinance number is that?
I'm a two seventeen, and they're right behind me.
The ord-.
No, no, ordinance, ordinance.
Oh. And we have enforced that ordinance for barking dogs.
Did a call back up there on my phone, real quick.
Yeah, cause I was looking for it today.
Yeah, I can send it to.
S ninety point oh five.
So we could send them a letter.
Does that, uh, paragraph F.
Well, if we send them one, we got a lot of others.
I know.
Paragraph F, so that is habitual barking or loud and continuous noise which causes serious annoyance or disturbance to the neighborhood. And that rooster is just, like I said, I live next door to Alice, and she can't hear, so it doesn't bother her.
Doesn't bother her.
She might be complaining that cause her grandson and their four kids moved in with her, so, well, they have moved in completely, but it's right behind her bedroom, most. Two bedrooms for the kids too, and she has a very small backyard, but I spoke in with the neighbors and they said they were gonna do something about it, and then.
Yeah.
About three or four times, and then it's still there, and every morning I may have them woke up, and then my dogs still woke up and.
Charlie.
Concerning these chickens. Your liability cost that you have on your homeowners will not cover those chickens. That, when you have plus either nine, nineteen or more, it has to go on a farm, most, more money, broader coverage. They do not have the coverage to take care of it, and those birds do. But I know in most farm countries, twenty is the number. You got twenty chickens, that's a separate charge, just like it is where somebody counts, somebody knows, somebody, whatever. And they don't think anything about it, but chickens are dangerous to our health, just like we said, you know. I watched a movie last night, something about, you know, what, uh, what stuff in on chicken, you know. My old man said, no, well, he said, it's just more chicken. It, it is a.
Well, we not, we not only have chickens, we've got pigs, we've got goats, we've got them all right here in town.
They do have all of them, but like.
None of that falls under their homeowners, what I'm doing.
But like, give you depth in my backyard, in the part of my house that sticks out the most in the back, you get like, in the front, you have desks out there, here, to that back wall.
Mm-hmm.
And rooster and chickens, there's rooster, three chickens and two ducks, and it's in a little, I was, uh, smaller than your office.
Yeah.
Okay, well, let us reach out to the attorney and see if we can send a letter, since you've come and did a formal complaint at the town council.
And I've talked to them several, several times, and I said they were bringing in, that started about six, eight weeks ago, and. It's just enough, and I did tell them that, so I said, I'm retired, I like to sleep in, but I can't sleep in.
Right. Yeah, my, my.
And I can't, can't open my windows either.
No, you can't, my son has to roost till they cross about one thirty or two o'clock in the morning.
Oh, man.
It's a street over.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so we'll, we'll reach out to him. Any other old business?
Yeah, what did we find out on the tennis courts?
I'm waiting on Jesse Henderson to get with me.
Who's gonna meet, when's he supposed to meet with you?
Um, this week, so he's supposed to get back with me when he's coming down.
Okay. Okay.
So, yeah.
When you looked at the college, did it have some of the same problem?
No, I didn't see none on there, so, and ours is.
Well, they just had theirs re.
Same time, wasn't it?
Year bef- year before, and ours is just, you, you go look at ours and it's just filled with all of them.
Yeah. That's something.
And then cracks, I mean, there's cracks.
As much as that costs.
Right. Yeah.
Better do something. Alright, new business, ordinance, uh, BB guns, we've got that table, Kyle and him's gonna be looking at that, stormwater projects. Scott Williams is gonna be coming up with some of those, uh, Indiana landmarks, back to Chip. So he's proposed that he would like for us to approve ten thousand dollars for Smuckers and eighty thousand for the other, is that my understanding?
That's correct, that's acquisition and initial cost until they can get back to us with a budget on both.
And Lynn, Indiana Landmarks is the one buying them?
Uh, correct, so.
Buying the one and getting them.
Owner, ownership will be held in the name of Indiana Landmarks, or whatever, however they're styled as an entity, yes, just like they did on the Melican House.
Okay.
But using the little endowment money that's co- oh, or owned by the town and the college.
So, right, what we do, we do a sub grant to them, just like we do with the town of Hanover for things, we do a sub grant to Indiana Landmarks, just like we did on the Melican House. And, um, and, and that, uh, we have to do, uh, we do two sub grants, one is the acquisition and the early money, and then the second one, if approved by everybody, would be the renovation, uh, the exterior renovations. And we'll know that number in a couple of months.
Okay. Somebody have any questions?
I have just a curiosity question.
Sure.
William Dunn's house, is it still standing?
Yes.
Is that the one right on Main Street?
Where is William Dunn's?
Okay, Dunn's house?
Yeah.
It's, it's behind you, yeah.
Uh, yeah, it's still standing.
Yeah, it's, it's, I can't remember, what street is that?
It's, uh.
Locust.
Locust Street.
Right, right before you get to Donna Pettit Way.
Yeah, I wanted to say behind the park, Fireman's Park, but I couldn't think of that road, I was like, yeah, it's still standing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No.
I've done three, three years of work with Madison Visitor Center Historic, and I've given historic tours to Madison, and I was reading, looking up years of the May here, where William Dunn's house is.
Yeah, yeah, it's still standing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Founded the town, but, so where is it?
It's on Locust Street.
Locust and First, right there at the corner.
I, but look, I know the five windows upstairs.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm just curious if it's just that.
Yeah, yeah, it's still, it's there.
It's still there.
It is, it is there.
Yeah. It is.
Pretty cool.
I'd like to pick it up and put it on Main Street, but I don't think anybody will let me.
Yeah.
And all the Williamson Dunn history is in the archives of the library, at Hanover College Library, if you ever wanna look at it.
I started, I did, I did all the research and did program for tourists.
Yeah. You probably did all that.
That, but now, that they're using that town.
Yeah.
Cause when I retired, I had it on my office and I sent it over there.
But that's when the boats came in, and that's when the tourists, first boats and the boat tours and all that stuff, they don't, just.
Yeah. Yeah.
So you, so Lake has approved it on their, on your side, right?
He has, uh, should mention that, yes, Lake has seen this and he is fine with it, he's the one who offered to donate the Smucker House, cause he knows it would help, help the cause.
Okay, I'm gonna need a motion.
I guess I'll make it, the motion, for both.
For ninety thousand?
Ninety thousand.
For ninety thousand. Throw a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. There you go.
Great, thank you all very much.
You're welcome. Alright, Rumkey contract, so Rumkey reached out this week to us, um. They are offering, I mean, cause it's been, it's been a year, so November the first, uh.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And they've got the years through, all the way to, through two thousand thirty, the pricing increases on there.
Yeah, so, right now.
I believe it's been a year.
I know, right? Um. So it says, the document serves to add the following to the contract dated October the fifteenth, twenty nineteen, and between the town of Hanover, Indiana and Rumkey of Indiana. So effective November the first, twenty twenty-five, continuing through October thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. Rumkey shall continue to provide one time per week a solid waste collection for all residential and light commercial customers within the town of Hanover. Each resident and light commercial customer, customer will be provided with one ninety-five gallon trash cart at no additional charge. Additional trash carts will be made available for three fifty each per month billed directly to the customer, all trash must be inside the trash cart for collection. Large bulky items will be collected on regular service day with the purchase of a special sticker issued by the town. Rumkey shall continue to provide every other week curbside recycling collection on Mondays, which I thought it was Tuesdays.
It's Tuesdays.
Tuesday, yeah, I'll have to, I'll have to get.
So we need to ask him about that.
They have not sent an updated calendar for recycling.
For recycling.
I've got one.
Do you think?
It's red, yes.
They did send one, but it's one I have.
No.
It was wrong.
It's wrong.
Yeah.
It's on the opposite Tuesday.
Yeah, yeah.
So I was putting my stuff out.
But they're supposed to be, yeah, there's, yeah, so, yeah, the one was wrong.
Right, right, right.
Then I was watching my neighbors, never doing it on the other Tuesday.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you're like, what are you?
So we need to make sure that we, you talk to him about that.
Yeah.
Each resident will be provided with a ninety-five gallon cart at no additional charge, which I like that, because. Watching elderly people like myself try to carry those, and as it all falls out, as I'm trying to pick it up and get down there.
Oh, well, I, yeah.
Yeah, I, I like that factor.
I love that, and, and that, and no additional charge for that one, so.
And it saves stuff from blowing away, so.
Yes, yes, so.
But now, where they say they don't pick it up, it's not in the can, most of my street doesn't put it in the can, trash.
Yeah, okay.
They just put a bag out, and then the raccoons get it, and it's everywhere.
Uh, several people, several people I live at only have one bag of trash, and they just set it out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But the raccoons get in it, and it's.
Yeah. So November the first, twenty twenty-five through October the thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, it'd be fourteen twenty per unit for solid waste, three ninety-seven per unit for recycling. Uh, the park out here is a hundred and eight twelve per month, and wastewater treatment plant is a hundred and twenty-two twenty-eight. November the first, twenty twenty-six through October the thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven, it will go up fourteen sixty-three per unit for solid waste, four dollars and nine cents per unit for recycling. A hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-six cents per month for the park, a hundred and twenty-five ninety-five per month for the wastewater treatment plant. November the first, twenty twenty-seven through October the thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight, waste, a solid waste will be fifteen oh seven per unit, four twenty-one per unit for recycling. A hundred and fourteen seventy for, per month for the park, and a hundred and twenty-nine seventy-three per month for the wastewater treatment plant. Um. Uh, option years, November the first, twenty twenty-eight through October the thirty-first, twenty twenty-nine, fifteen thirty-two per unit for solid waste, four thirty-four per unit for recycling. Hundred and eighteen fourteen for the park, and a hundred and thirty-three sixty-two for the wastewater treatment plant. November first, twenty twenty-nine through October the thirty-first, twenty thirty, fifteen ninety-nine per unit for solid waste, four forty-seven per unit for recycling. A hundred and twenty-one sixty-eight for the park, and a hundred and thirty-seven per month for the wastewater treatment plant. All other items, all, all, all other terms and conditions of the original contract dated October the fifteenth, twenty nineteen shall remain unchanged.
So what does that mean for the consumer?
You don't have to raise it, you don't have to raise it, what, what we got in place for the next two years, I'll get you two thousand thirty.
Good, cause we, we.
Yeah, yeah.
Good, that's what I wanna make clear.
A little better.
So if we stay.
What we did.
Cause January.
Twenty-two fifty, twenty-five.
Cause we raised it twenty. Twenty, yeah.
Next year will be twenty-two fifty, the year after twenty-five.
At the end of that. Two thousand thirties, you're still making five, still five, five dollars more than.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, okay.
Well, that was kind of our plan originally, we hoped would happen.
Right.
You didn't have to go back to it.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's good.
I mean, this is a good, this is a good con- contract, all the way, yeah.
It's good.
Well, since we just raised two utilities, that's good news.
As long as they clarify the recycling day and.
Yeah. Yeah, as long as, yeah, I think that was the only thing, yeah.
Then help, help do the calendar.
And it has to, on the bulk, getting a sticker for bulk items like furniture, stuff like that, you come to the town hall, you get them.
Yes, yeah.
Yes, TV.
Where they take back mattresses and stuff like that, or a.
Will they take what?
Mattresses.
I think so, I've seen people put it out there.
You have to wrap them in plastic.
You do?
Yeah.
Wrap them in plastic, huh?
I think they take everything but electronics.
Yeah.
Well, they'll take a TV, you can give them like a sticker for like four bucks for a TV.
I didn't know. I thought you had a TV.
You can?
I've seen that happen.
Didn't know.
You don't have it at, you got TV stickers, I have to take mine out to the proving ground, usually it's e-waste.
I, I.
Huh?
E-waste.
Yeah.
I didn't think you'd do a TV.
I take it to my brother in Jeffersonville, but it's, you just have a can and a sticker, they'll take it.
Oh, wow.
I just call out, right?
You probably instructed if I get a sticker to haul it all the way to Jeff.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's fifteen a piece out at the proving ground, or was.
Yeah. So, Kobe.
Was it three dollars for a sticker, four dollars?
I think it's, is it three dollars for a sticker?
Uh, two and four, two for a small and four for a large.
Four, I think.
Yeah. Four for a large, yeah.
Okay.
So, does everybody have to do trash, somebody asked me if they can buy a Chelsea card instead of doing this. You know, having to buy a card and take all your stuff out to Chelsea.
Yeah, fifty dollars a year, you can take your trash out to Chelsea.
Yeah.
No, they have to do this if they live in the town.
If, if they live in.
Unless, unless it's an apartment building.
Yes, yeah, unless it's apartment building.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's like recycling, you know, not ev- we know not everybody in town recycle.
Right. Yeah, but we still got to pay them, yeah.
Have you seen the trash line, it's like South Best School.
Isn't?
It's out there, yeah, it's awful, yeah.
I had somebody ask me that, I didn't know.
But I like them rates.
Yeah, so do we wanna approve it tonight?
Yeah, those are good.
I'd say we approve it, yeah.
Really?
Okay, I'm gonna need a motion.
But I think they figured ten fifty was cheaper than.
I'm making a motion to approve the trash rate through two thousand thirty.
Thirty, is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Yeah, we'll just need for them to send us, I'm not gonna sign this because.
Wanted some kind of paperwork from him today to bring to the meeting.
Yeah, so just tell him, I'm gonna circle the Mondays.
Uh, once he gets, once he gets the contract already, and then makes the.
Okay. Yep, so that ought to be a good thing for our next newsletter to put in.
Yeah, yeah.
There's, can I add something to that ordinance on the nuisance for animals, so I did Google how to keep a rooster quiet in the morning.
Uh-huh.
And you, you can, from a veterinarian's, you can buy a throw collar that prevents them from stretching their neck, so they can't crow. Or the only way to keep them quiet is to put them in a dark roost overnight with no light in it, and don't let them out till eight o'clock in the morning, and they won't roost. I mean, the, uh, uh, uh.
Yeah.
Well, we're, we're on a lister, and a lot of towns, so loud chickens, but no roosters.
No roosters, yeah.
And they just told me, they said, when they first got them, they said, we think we got a rooster, and she, when we took, checked the town hall, they tells us we can't have a rooster.
No. I don't know.
So I don't know who told them that.
I don't either.
I don't know.
They said they came in and checked before they got the chickens for the kids. I got a nice German shepherd that likes chicken. They, they, they have a German shepherd.
How did they?
My sunglasses, Tony.
Alright, any other new business?
Ew.
No sewer adjustments, a council payable voucher?
And Sunday I might buy a chicken and that would.
Are you having devil things too?
I'm making a motion for council payable of a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-eight cents.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, Hanover Town Council will meet on Tuesday, September the sixteenth, at six o'clock PM at the Hanover Community Center, two hundred Spruce Lane. Uh, we do have, um.
Party in the park.
Party in the park, that's September the thirteenth, from eleven to two, here at the park, we're gonna have hamburgers and hot dogs and music and fun time.
Foam.
Foam for the kids to play in, so.
Yeah, I'm getting in it, aren't you?
Face painting. Yeah, hopefully it's more.
Face painting.
Oh, face painting.
Face painting, yeah, so. Uh, Spooktacular's not till October the eighteenth, but it's from five PM to eight PM, uh, candy donations, so if anybody would like to donate candy for, um, that event.
At or the fire, or the police department.
Or the police department, they can drop it off at town hall. So.
Cool, I'll get some.
Okay.
And if you wanna see some scary Halloween stuff, go over Kobe's area, do you see that up the street from you already?
Seen it the other day, yeah.
Oh, gosh.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, but it's cool.
Yeah.
Alright, if nothing else, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So, move.
Throw a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
They have the tallest skeleton, they got a skeleton, just the top coming out of the ground.
I'll tell you what, they did, they did.
Thanks, Jeff.
It's cooler than.
Hi. Uh-huh.
They've had that Halloween stuff out at Dollar Store for a month.
Yeah, when my neighbors put that out there.
Oh, we got them, right, right here by the park.
I told my wife, I said, it's August, not September, October, but August.
Oh, they. No, but they chased Debbie and tried to eat her clothes.
And they're putting that shit out. That's what I was thinking.
I don't know.
Didn't they do?
It was a little scary.
Yeah, my husband, he had, he's, he told us, Danny said.